Bonsoir! Now, before I say anything, Philippe J. Pierre, son nom kouga du ye, kuye eleksio. You in government, you have fifteen, you say, call the elections. Because Flabos is ready. Tonight, I bring you greetings. I bring you greetings from the New York caucus, where we just had a major activity to raise funds for the party to help prepare us for the upcoming election. I want you to put your hands together for the New York caucus and our chairman, Théral Poudin. I had the opportunity to be there and to address the gathering, and I can tell you, the energy outside of Saint Lucia is as good as the energy in Saint Lucia to get rid of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So sepa only Saint Lucy n'upawe. N'upawe outside of Saint Lucy. In fact, last night, before I left, I met with a group of people, and they told me, we need to tell the Prime Minister that every Saint Lucian, not the Prime Minister Philippe here, you know, our Prime Minister, Alan Chasney, that every Saint Lucian outside of Saint Lucia is ready to come back to Saint Lucia to vote out Philippe J. Pierre and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. I know the Texas caucus is following, and I also had the opportunity to meet with the Texas branch, and they are planning a big event for later this year or early next year. And Mister Political Leader, they have asked me to inform you that they are looking forward to having you present with them. Now, after I heard Harold... Moi m'hem di mabouze pa la ko. Let me, let me say something to you. I'll say a few things. Nu hache fouet pou fouete nu, ek abesa nu ka hela. Now, Flabos are speaking to us. If you did not go out and vote on election day, you voted for the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So o dekwa se Harold okafekte. O dekwa se komite ya soufouye, o deka afekte. Ebe milli abesa. You see, we have to deal with the reality, the situation that Saint Lucia is in today. Every Flabo who did not do what they had to do leading up to election, you are responsible. I expect Labour to vote for Labour, but I don't expect Flabos to stay home based on the propaganda of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. We told you the truth, you did not want to believe, but you chose to believe the lies of Labour. Se munaki de di yo makota manye Harold ka handla ba isoufouye. Ebe weme manye ma ka handla abesa. Me la bana ya bouy handla, saika fe. What is she doing? Now... Yodi se Minister of Commerce. Ek jugwadi, le jugwaka pronouns commerce apatwa. Ikadou se Minister Commerce. Esabawe. So isam Emma se Minister Commerce. So, let's take a little time, because a lot of things have been said. Let's just pause a moment and review the 2.5%. They tell you it would not affect food. Se hodi au sa tout sa Labour dise ma chos. If Labour has a PhD in anything, it is in lies and propaganda. There's nothing, even the Labour Party tell you "good morning", that is not true. Pa men bonjour yo, ou sa believe. Because this is a party that is built on lies and propaganda. And let me use myself as an example to highlight what I'm saying. What did they tell us about Richard Frederick? And where is Richard Frederick today? Ek tout se hipokwit lagi deka do Richard, ou sa lan Flabo ki pa voktai Flabo, because Richard, there's still a Flabo. Abesa tout Labour ka vote ba yo. We will learn. Guamundi, soupatan ukaisati. So we are feeling it now. We are feeling it. So 2.5%, they tell you Philippe J. Pierre said it will not affect food. Isn't that what they told us? Iba yafekte ma he, so KFC pa ma he. O tan sa? You remember between 2011 and 2016, when people were complaining about the high price of sausage? Ema di hot paga viya na sausage like Top She. Ge se local brand na kipli bo ma shea. Hot obliessa? Gozile reject li hot me ya le do hot soufouye, ebe sa hot enchebe. That is the last woman that should be elected in the politics of Saint Lucia. Le yote ma dey about soufouye. Pokimani ya baran soufouye se Gozile. Idi pa really konnet about soufouye akko. Today, she come back to Soufre, you all voted for her. Now, sa dimo se Flabo, we see how bad vote Bali, pitet savwe. But we did not do enough. We could have done more than what we did. And that is why I'm saying, I agree with Harold. This is not the time just for talking. This is the time for action. And I agree with Harold in saying, we not fighting no battle behind the scenes. Sepa mouvi nuka fe isia. This is real. These are the days of our lives under the Saint Lucia Labour Party. So yofute 2.5% talenou. And everything, so sam say yodi? Hot kapale tuop. Y'all are talking too much. So talk was too cheap. So yoba me 2.5%. They put 5% Digicel and Flo. So tout pa le hot kapale ni tila le fona sakai dou boot. Le ma di hot kapale tuop. So we are muzzling y'all with a 5% increase on talk is cheap. You think Labour Party playing? We may be playing games, but the Labour Party is not about games. And Emma told you about it. So so many people have explored on the 2.5%, but let's look at it. So why are dirty machine, oh dear? A vehicle that costs $20,000. Yofute 2.5 lalay, komo kapie. And the 2.5 is after they've calculated everything, cost, freight, and insurance to bring it. Then they put the VAT, and after they have done all of that, then they calculate the 2.5%. So in essence, the two...
2.5 plus VAT, so you pay VAT on 2.5.
On the 2.5. So, so yoma, please go halfway.
That's right.
They put the 12.5% after the 2.5%. Because if they have put the 2.5 after, it would be less. You, I, I want you all to understand. I want you all to understand what is going on with us in Saint Lucia. Because the Labour Party is not happy with where UWP is today. We lost 15 to. Some people believe we didn't lose. By whatever means, Labour Party is the government. Now, upasage lot eleksio. You cannot win Soufre by 400 votes. You have to win Soufre by 800, 900, 1,000 votes. So layo ka try volle, lakai 12 vote, yoba isavole. I want, I want us to understand, Labour Party is not going to go down with a fight. You see the slogan, "Protecting the Victory"? It's not about protecting the people. It's not about protecting the country. It's about protecting the victory. And who are the benefactors of the victory? Moi le ma de se mun soufouyea, ekoli wo Saint Lucy ki ka hela sigwe, ekika hela piblik, ekika hela sous social media, ki benefis ou sa jwen depi Labour vini a office. I want you to tell me, in two years of Labour, what you have benefited? Now, let me say something to the parents. Alan Chasney promised you a laptop computer with all the lesson plans and books on it. You would not have had to go and buy one textbook for the children for this academic year had UWP been in office. But you know what they give you? A blank laptop computer. And I challenged the Saint Lucia Labour Party to tell us how much money they spent on these computers. I just came from Walmart, and I saw computers for $179. That is even better than the computers that they are giving the children here. But if you go and check that now, that is to go and buy retail. I'm not talking about wholesale and discount and anything like this. You see, it is easy. The Labour Party knows that they can fool the people of Saint Lucia easily. So, parents are buying telephones for their children that cost much more than a computer. But because the government hands you a computer, you believe that you have arrived. But where is the program of internet? So tout sama my lakini computer. Let land Digicelak flo voya, ki sa idik avini. An increase. So now the parents had to find the additional money to pay for the package for the use of the computer. We were giving you the MiFi device. We were giving you the package that was negotiated. You heard Labour Party trying to take claim for the local channels and the $25 package. That was an arrangement that myself and the political leader of the UWP as Prime Minister went into, weaved telephone companies to offer a package to the poor and vulnerable people of this country. Who wants to take claim for it can take claim. Tout sa ki bon se yo ki fe. Tout sa ki pa bon yo ra dou se Flabo ki fe. So let's look at it further. Let's look at what the Labour Party has offered you and what they have done. Now, we have a Prime Minister. He say, if they say short... He cannot say short, and he cannot say tall. Now, you know what the Prime Minister's problem is? He's not short, he's not tall, and he's not average. Iba kut, iba ho, iba in between, iba amita. The man is invisible. We have an invisible Prime Minister running the country. Every time there is a problem and you call on him, what does he say? Layodi about crime, idi sepa li ki police, sepa pa iki te police. Sepa mouki di. The man is the Minister of Security. Yomadou about crime, oudi sepa uki police, sepa pa uki te police. So that's an invisible Prime Minister. They tell him about the high prices. He said, "The prices, inflation is imported." So who is importing inflation into Saint Lucia? Is it Marci? Is it Digicel? Is it Cable and Wireless? For something to be imported, somebody must import it. It cannot come by itself. So I wonder, Prime Minister, to tell the people of Saint Lucia who he hired to import inflation into Saint Lucia? Because the Obligation Agency ki west cosan pu importation. Now, it so happened that the Minister of Commerce is the minister responsible for most importation under the government. Now, tan sa, sepa mouki di, in their own words. They asked the Minister of Commerce a simple question. Is it possible that the increase in prices that we are seeing in the supermarkets and on goods in Saint Lucia, that there can be price gouging? So, so you know, price gouging has to do with using... Well, there are two ways they can use it. If you are the sole importer, and you have no competition, you can put your product at whatever price you want. Or, you are using a situation, an unfortunate situation, to capitalize on charging more than the thing is really worth. What was her response? So I want to say tonight, es Minister Commerce ek mercy café mun soufe a Saint Lucy. O tan sam edya? Es Minister Commerce ek mercy. Café mun soufe espwe a Saint Lucy, because yob lechwe tout mun. They said, "Kill it." Now, let's look at the things that Labour Party has killed. What have they killed? They killed the hospital in Soufre. Harold, we were on the verge of signing the agreement for a turnkey project in Soufre, where a fully functional hospital would be handed over to the government of Saint Lucia. Samo, Emma, kill it. The grosile highway spider, the fallen. Labour Party, kill it. Now, that is the Emma doctrine. Remember, they spoke about the Bellrose doctrine. Because Bellrose mutwe osaki desibo se fe. So Emma vini ek on doctrine ni abesa, ek doctrine ni se, kill it. So what happened to the Emma project? What happened to Saint Jude? She's sick. What happened to sugar? Because yodi sugar kapao diabetes. So, when you drink Romba, it turns to sugar. When you eat rice, it turns to sugar. So everything, because all carbohydrates that you, you, you consume, turns to sugar. So, so what, what is it that Emma is telling us? Now, you, for us in Saint Lucia, everything that is good for this country, Labour says, "Kill it." That's the new Emma of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. Ek soufouye, ek Saint Lucy, si n'upame ekonu biye. Nu tout kamou, abas Saint Lucia Labour Party. Because the evidence is there. Everything that, look at it, roads. What have they done with the roads? Bon sam eda akor ki wa suximea. Because hot men deka wepete n'upama he xime. Le Harold haya vajen nom pou fe kanal asxime espewas. Because ada di hot pa hen a contract. Because se ven contract itela, hotai malbali Harold. Because we don't understand that government cannot give everybody a contract. But Harold gave more contracts than any other parliamentary representative in Soufre before him. So what has happened? Commerce ja soufouye ki haye n'contract abesa. When the new development roads were being done, how many Soufre people were working? Toutan nou fe disiltin soufouye. N'upas je m'eme ne ekwip ma sa piès lo kote. And when they're telling you, when they are telling you about, oh, um, yopa vle Flabo tlatay. When I was in government between 2006 and 2011, you remember Hurricane Lenny? The waves had done a lot of damage to Soufre by Quellas and these areas there. I came there, and I saw a white photon truck walking with its SLP sticker and star on it. And I smiled, and I turned, and I walked away, and I left the man there doing his work. That is the difference between the United Workers' Party and the Saint Lucia Labour Party. And some of you Flabos want us to behave like Labour, but Flabo can never be Labour. Flabo is a government for all of the people of Saint Lucia. And we need to understand that. Labors have to it, and Flabos have to it. And I am saying to us, under our Prime Minister Alan Chasney, we were creating sufficient work for everybody to get by in this country. Labour Party cannot create jobs, so what they do? So they kill the roads. What have they done with gas? They have put gas at $17, kosse bas driver. Kosse sa ki deka strike la, me jas mute xime fosse jacla la. Ek ki pli move passe le Harold de la, hotev la la sous strike. Sa ki fe ta abesa. What happened? You see, that's why I tell you that talk needs to be over. We need to be engaged in protest action. We cannot allow Labour to remain in office for the next three years. We have to force the hand to call the election. We are not advocating violence. We are not preaching violence. But we are not going to sit by and allow the price of gas to remain at $17 when in other islands around us that are less favorable economically than us, gas is $14. We have to force the hand of the government to bring the price of gas to the right level. And it's not an orange match we need, we need a yellow match. Let the Flabos make their voices heard throughout the length and breadth of Saint Lucia. That is what we need. And I believe the gas price is a good place to start. And Philippe J. Pierre, I know you watching this broadcast tonight. Among the 900 people online, I know you are one of them. Over 1,000? I know you are there. I am telling you, you better start thinking of adjusting the price of gas. Misxime soufouye akai fed. Ou ekome truck ek ekwip ma, ki pakka gapkal di sakla. Se mun soufouyea, sa hot ni bu di abatsa. Si se Flabo ki de la, truckers deka la sous strike. Equipment owners would go and strike. Now, I believe that every piece of equipment that is owned by a Saint Lucian should be parked on that Soufre road. We have to match them and show them we have more equipment than what the train is brought into Saint Lucia. That is when we will know you are serious. Upa hadi me truck, upakla, zebka levataya. Buetlakapui, ek otat truck nefpakla. Ek laja, iu asaba, lonu sa. That is a grant given to Saint Lucia for the repairs of the road. Ek deadwit vannu. Deadwits sold us out on this project. Because no Saint Lucian contractor could qualify to tender on that contract. Now, that se lamme for. See, guy Joseph there in charge, Saint Lucy ekika fe twa fa isar. If UWP was the one handling that, but you see, you may tell me it started with UWP, but me do deadwite de havan nu.
That's right.
De havan nu, de achwe nu. He had killed us already. So I want you to understand what is at play. The soul of this country is being sold under us. Alan Chasney went into an arrangement. I want you to listen to me carefully. For about 100 acres of land in Boseju in Viewford, that was just a few cows and some ticks alone. That was on the land. You heard me, a few cows and some ticks. Alone, that was on the land. Not generating $1 for Saint Lucia. The single decision made by the political leader of the United Workers' Party, who was Prime Minister, brought more benefits. Over 10 million, over $20 million had been spent, and it was Saint Lucian, truckers, equipment, and different persons who were working there. All of this happened. And people were protesting. Where are the citizens for accountability? Where are the concerned citizens of Viewford? Hot deka match, hot deka protest. Abesa tout pa idou boot Viewford atiwa crime. The only thing that Labour has not stopped in Viewford is crime. Every piece of work that was going on in Viewford, they stopped it. What has happened? They killed it. Because that is how they want to operate. I want you to understand that. You are now hearing. And the boat owners in Soufre, I want you to listen to me. The taxi drivers who do the London sea tours, I want you to listen to me. When the sheep anchors out there, kome yokai pe yow trip from Lapuale Hummingbird, ebe from Lapuala Soufla. So, what the UWP was doing in developing Viewford port is that we would create a hub in Soufre and going down to Denry, so the whole country would be connected with tourism from the north. from the north to the south. What has Labour Party done? They put an X by Viewfort. They kill it. We are here for 40 years. They accused Alan Chasney of selling the patrimony of Saint Lucia. Now let me tell you something. If you don't control your seaports and you don't control your airports, what do you control in your country? What is it you are controlling? As a child growing to school, I was taught that the French and the British fought 14 times. And one of the primary reasons for all of this was the importance of the deep water harbour that Saint Lucia had in Castries. Every government, when Sir John was Prime Minister, that you can go and look at the Act of Slasper. You could not trade with these assets in Saint Lucia. That is why under UWP government, we said we were not going to lease our airport to anybody. How can, so you've now given the port Castries for 30 years and Port Soufre for 30 years. With a 10-year option to renew, which makes it 40 years. You put an X by Viewfort, you cannot do anything in Viewfort. So you don't put in Viewfort. A foreigner is controlling, ek mwelema deo. Muna yo fe di lebi la, esibla ebe esinwe. So you want to crucify my white Prime Minister, Alan Chasney. But you go in and sell my port to a white person I don't know from anywhere. Now, I don't have no problems with any white person. It is the Labour Party that have problems with white people. Be visias yo visias. Mati okamati. Se muna mateni secret detlebi la, ki ku layo. What is the complexion of the people they have the boat? You remember prior to the election, there was a boat in Soufre? Who are the people on the boat? Now I don't practice discrimination. I don't believe in black and white, green or yellow. I believe the content of a man's heart is what determines who the man is. And I know the best man for Saint Lucia, with the best heart for the people of Saint Lucia today as leader is Alan Michael Chasney. It is Philip JP that is selling Saint Lucia into slavery again. What did they do with the banana industry? As you heard from her, they kill it. Kidan ye for batima boat vinset, uh, batima fig vinsetlisi. I want to ask you Saint Lucians. When was the last time a boat came to collect bananas in Saint Lucia? The last time that happened, UWP was in office. So sa mwelema du akor. Se farmer de washla. It was Harold along with the UWP government that went and cleared the landslides after so many years that you could access your farms. And when Mr. Chasney said, pe apan ye, tutmoun devle by blood. Talas, his fig hotka impu import setlisi. I told you, can you believe plantain is cheaper in New York and in Boston than it is in Saint Lucia today? Yo kwen banana, plibo mashe, New York, New York pa hablate banana. Why is that? Because Labour Party said, kill it. So when they don't have, what do you expect going to happen? Now I have five minutes, let me deal with Saint Jude. We told you the truth about Saint Jude, but you did not believe us. You did not believe us, you believed the Labour Party. Well, Tuesday in Parliament, you will hear the truth. How much money did they borrow for Saint Jude? 201 million. So, len utedi hot sek milio, ebe dis milio, ebe sek kat milio pa ifini lopitala. Hot quen utemati, ebe milliar abesa. Labour Party mati by hot. Alvardita Kemiko ek peti. Yo ha pe renoa of $5 million pu Kemiko ek pressure wash yo po sato e Saint Jude. Usab ki la Saint Jude yo ka try to avaya se wa. The two new buildings that was being built by Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party, the dialysis and the physiotherapy building. Ek usab Philip JP es sa hotelma. He's saying, well, you know certain parts of the hospital have approval, so we have started work. Ask him which part that have approval. The part that was being done by Alan Chasney and the United Workers' Party. As I speak to you today, they have hired a consultant to do a drawing for Saint Jude. The old one. Now let me tell you something. You see us flabos who hotka adopt a VMS Labour. You see the propaganda of Labour? You see the rhetoric of Labour that must not be named among us? The only thing that UWP was doing was building a new Saint Jude. The hospital is Saint Jude and it's a new Saint Jude. Labour Party is building the old Saint Jude. They can use whatever phrase they want. Mah wepete phrase Labour. Mah wepete phrase Labour. Ek Labour sam sa yo ka fa ausa, se nu flabo. And everything you all hear Labour Party talking about, hotni ya chatla, sa akasatul etli by sa. Well, if there's one thing we need to do is kill it. When it come to your phone, once is Labour Party propaganda, kill it. Don't pass it on. So Labour Party told you a lie about Saint Jude. Bo ve Philip JP. You remember Kenny Anthony went to Parliament? And he said he was borrowing $41 million for certain projects and for obligations to Rochamelle. He never told us what the obligations was to Rochamelle until two or three years later, when we had to go and pay a bill that the Ram Sahoy report said we were not owing. Kenny took the money of Saint Lucia. Ek sisanga diya pa wekenny poté plant konme. You took the money of Saint Lucia and you paid bills for your friends that we were not owing. 12 million plus US dollars YIP by moun. Nu pa adwe. Guv'nor pa adwe la, jo pe la jo guv'nor, ek YIP. Now, did you hear Philip JP? He said the 75 million from the Saudis was for Saint Jude Hospital and the stadium. Now mwelema deo akwesio. Si yo still kadro pla by Saint Jude. Ki mania isab komela ha Saint Jude kaikos, puyai bete alun pu Saint Jude. Ek eshi hadi nou, komela ja ki pu stadium la, ek komela ja ki pu Saint Jude. So lana kokomaka kandidaba isa. But Philip JP, it's not Claudius you talking to, you know. It's the flabo party you talking to. So we are watching you and we are monitoring you. And when they go to Parliament, I want to hear. Because u pa ipeté laja ku pasa bugisa. Ki mania osapeté laja asu apipwe? Es banka by moun laja asu apipwe? Approximately. I tell you, we have an invisible Prime Minister. So in closing, we have an invisible Prime Minister. He is not tall and he is not short. So he has a problem with short people and he has a problem with tall people. Bogaboblemli. Guamundi ti hash kabat gobwa. So go hash siboze kabat gobwa. So, now I know what he was talking about. When he look at this man here we have as leader of the United Workers' Party. He had to look at him like that. Boy pe abesa. He don't like to look up to the man. But that's the only leader Saint Lucia has today. In Alan Michael Chasney and Philip JP. Whether you like it or not, look up to the man. Look up to Alan Michael Chasney. I thank you and good night.